Our clerk, Nancy Banks, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fercassi.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Jordan is excused. Mr. Lance is excused. Mr. Moss?
Here.
I'm here.
Ms. Seymour?
Here.
Mr. Seiver?
I'm here.
You have five members present.
You know that, Mr. President?
Yeah.
We have to adjourn. We can't pass a budget with less than five votes.
Be a five. Would everybody rise to the flag of allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have to go get the policeman to go get them.
Okay. Well, I don't think that's gonna happen. All right. We have a relatively short special meeting this evening, and we have no presentations, and we have no appointments, no minutes to approve. We do have a three-item consent agenda. And first of all, is there anyone who on council who wants to pull something from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, then I will read the consent agenda. The first item is an award to bid vending machines to Modern Vending of Troy, Michigan. This is a no-cost item for the city. The agreement requires the vendors supply and maintain 27 food and beverage vending machines at various sites, including both the city golf courses, Beechwoods, Rec Center, the Civic Center Sports Arena. Six bids were received. The award criteria included the quality of products, the prices of products, machine maintenance, capacity and service, and the availability of snack alternatives. CAB is an award of bids on grass seed fertilizer and assorted products for grounds and turf maintenance for city properties and parks. The three best acceptable responses were from Residex of Novi, Michigan, John Deere of Cleveland, Ohio, and Harrows of Howell, Michigan. The amount provided in the 2013-14 Parks and Rec budget is $48,000, which is flat from the previous year's budget. Purchases will be at the best price from among these three sources. All products offered are environmentally sensitive. And again, this is an annual expenditure. And CAC, our final item, is for the purchase of water meters, water meter repair parts, and for replacement meter reading units on an as-needed basis. And it's not to exceed the amount of $650,000 annually. This annual amount is flat from the previous fiscal year, and this authorization would be for 15 months, from July 1st, 2013, through September 30th, 2014. And this is being done under the Oakland County Cooperative Contract with Michigan Meter Technology of Madison Heights. This is a way we stretch our dollars, and which will hold the meter technology, will be holding the bid prices stable through the 15-month period. Funds are provided for this purpose from the 2013-14 Water and Sewer Budget, as well as from the 14-15 Water and Sewer Budget. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve consent agenda items CAA, CAB, and CAC.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Moss.
Or Mr. Frazier.
I'm sorry. Moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Moss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have consent agenda approved. Next, we have public hearings. This is our annual event to approve next year's budget, which will start next week on July 1st. So, Mr. Charette, I'm going to turn this over to you for the annual presentation of the budget. And I think I would just add before Mr. Charette presents that council has been working on this budget for months. And again, this is the culmination of lots of discussion at previous meetings. So I think we are ready for a final review and vote this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor and city council, as the council president has indicated, along with the city clerk and the city treasurer, have been involved in matters of the city budget nearly nonstop over the past year. On June 3rd, we reviewed the proposed budget at length in a study session. It is a solid plan, which will move the city of Southfield forward in the upcoming fiscal year, which begins on July 1st. It is now time to issue our final report to the public concerning the proposed budget prior to requesting approval of the plan. We have a video summary for public information and to serve as a refresher to city council on all of the elements we have discussed over the hours we have spent together on the budget. I would like to thank our employees for their dedication, the mayor and council for their consistent policy-level support for the principles of effective stewardship of public funds, and City Cable 15 for their extraordinary effort in effectively conveying this important public information.
The economic storm, otherwise known as the Great Recession, has begun to pass, and with it comes the long and arduous task of rebounding from the financial havoc that has resulted in the last few years. The city of Southfield has ridden out these economic challenges through careful strategic and fiscal planning, adhering to strict spending limits and embracing a gold standard of public service to maintain high-quality services despite the tough times. Hello and welcome to the special 2013-2014 Budget Edition of 15 News. The worst of the long economic slump that has slammed both the state and country appears to be over. Now begins a period of recovery as Southfield, along with countless other municipalities, climb out of the economic mire. Through an expenditure diet that began with a five-year renewable strategic plan in 2004, the city council, mayor, and administration foresaw impending economic challenges. Despite being one of the hardest-hit cities of its size in Michigan, Southfield has displayed great resiliency, unity, and the heart of a champion. This team spirit involved inspired leadership by elected officials and exceptional assistance from city staff, business community, and residents, who showed their support for Southfield's future in many ways, which led to the overwhelming approval of a May 2011 military request to sustain outstanding police and fire services. While economists have long been forecasting that the economy would eventually begin recovering, Southfield did not wait on those predictions. The city remained aggressive in developing strategies that enabled it to remain operational through the worst of the recessionary period. Through these focused efforts, Southfield was able to meet its past-budget goals and deliver high-quality services, while being one of the few municipalities that avoided layoffs and/or reductions in essential on-the-street services during the Great Recession. The city even saw improved service enhancements with its 24/7 code enforcement and community appearance programs. But what are some of the areas that illustrate the city's ability to meet unprecedented challenges and enjoy continued progress moving forward? In all, we'll briefly touch on six areas: infrastructure improvements, public safety, community appearance and code enforcement, business development, education, cultural affairs, and city staffing. City officials realize that a full economic recovery on the state or local level could not be fully realized with crumbling roads. Through collaborative partnerships, the city has been proactive in seeking and acquiring much-needed funding for several road repair projects. Southfield reached an agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County. In all, elected officials and various Southfield agencies such as the DDA, Chamber of Commerce, Providence Hospital, and Northland Center assisted in obtaining 72% outside funding, or $2.6 million, for the sorely needed Greenfield Road reconstruction. Federal funding will also be utilized to cover a major portion of the Evergreen Road construction project planned for 2014. Capital improvements to ensure water quality and environmental stewardship continue to be a major focus. The proposed budget allocates $9.7 million for capital projects involving facilities, roads, and water and sewer system improvements. These strategic investments are even more impressive due to Act 51 state road funding levels for local and major street systems remaining stagnant and below the levels of three years ago. The city continues to invest in the future despite daunting financial limitations. While the typical cost of municipal operations is up 1.5% nationwide, as reflected in the Municipal Cost Index, the city's general fund budget is down 1.6%. The proposed general fund budget for 2013-2014 totals $65,599,556, which reflects a reduction of $1,67,580, or 1.6% less than last year. Public safety remains a key budgetary priority regardless of economic conditions comprising a total of $39,113,411, or 60% of the total general fund budget. The recent selections of Southfield's new police chief, fire chief, and emergency management director has solidified the leadership and direction of these crucial frontline departments and pointed them towards a strong future. As a result, residents can continue to rely on police and fire department services that are among the best in the region. Pleasing community appearance has always been a top priority, and Southfield continues to take a comprehensive approach to code enforcement and community appearance with even greater emphasis on citizen participation and interaction. The city continues to maintain high community appearance standards by clearly communicating city codes, ordinances, and expectations to residents and businesses alike. The Code Enforcement and Community Appearance Division graciously, yet aggressively, extends a helping hand with the goal of achieving voluntary compliance and conformance to the city's appearance standards. The partnership between the city and its residents is readily apparent with the continued support given to the I's hotline. The system reinforces the upkeep of business and residential vacant properties in order to preserve the integrity of the city's neighborhoods. Residents and businesspeople can call the I's hotline at area code 248-796-I'S, or 3937, to report appearance problems of any kind immediately. The city's revised resident handbook and its collaborative partnership with neighborhood associations has ensured that Southfield remains clean and attractive, key elements to attracting new businesses and residents. These efforts illustrate the city's short- and long-term commitment to protecting its physical appearance and curb appeal. Pleasing community appearance is an essential element in Southfield's business attraction and retention initiatives, along with building community spirit. The city continues to make use of employee grant funds that incorporate summer jobs for youth, who work in tandem with code enforcement and community appearance division staff to aid in litter disposal, vacant property upkeep, and sidewalk and bike path programs on a rotating basis throughout the summer season. This helps the city in its cost-recovery efforts aimed especially at owners of vacant homes or buildings. Southfield provides 24/7 around-the-clock monitoring and correction of appearance issues. Also connected to good community appearance is the need for livable housing. Southfield recognizes the importance of having good housing stock and has aggressively pursued programs that look to keep residents in their homes while fostering a strong sense of community. Programs such as Chore, Ship, the Southfield Home Improvement Program, Habitat for Humanity, Rebuilding Together Oakland County, and most notably, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, otherwise known as NSP, have helped to improve appearance and community spirit by spurring new reinvestments and stabilizing neighborhoods, one house at a time. Despite the daily economic pressures, Southfield's budget provides either direct funding or indirect support to all of those programs and activities. These are all baby steps towards stemming the tide of outmigration that took place during the middle of the recession and repopulating the city with young, career-minded families seeking employment opportunities and high-quality-of-life standards. Southfield continues to be the center of it all, despite development across southeastern Michigan being slow to recover from its economic slump. City officials continue to seek out public and private partnerships in building and/or redeveloping commercial retail and office space throughout the city. This has kept Southfield redevelopment-ready and made it a city that welcomes new businesses and entrepreneurs. These investments and redevelopments don't happen by accident; rather, they reflect the strong desire by the business development team and elected officials to build a strong economic climate that promotes expansion and allows businesses to thrive in Southfield and creates good-paying jobs. Some of the more recent development projects include: Secure24, an expanding IT solutions firm, moved its growing team to a larger headquarters, now facilitating 257 employees. Credit Acceptance Corporation received a $2 million grant from the Michigan Business Development Program incentive last May and will invest in additional $10 million in Southfield with 300 new jobs created. CFI, a full-service consulting and systems integration firm, will double their workforce in the coming year. The Hans Group recently moved from one Southfield location to another new headquarters in the city, while also opening a new Hansbake branch. Pepper Hamilton, a multi-practice law firm with more than 500 lawyers nationally, recently leased over 25,000 square feet of office space in the Travelers Towers. National chain Billy Sims Barbecue recently opened a new location in the city. Lear Corporation continues to grow and invest in Southfield with the conversion of the Sims Building into a new manufacturing and showroom facility. Having a strong business presence helps offset decline in the tax base caused by state, federal, and worldwide economic conditions beyond our control. The Southfield Public School District is a beacon of academic excellence as it shapes young minds to be the leaders of tomorrow. The district and its administration continues to be recognized nationally for its innovative literacy programs and academic achievement. In its 10th year, the Southfield Library continues to utilize emerging technologies to offer patrons greater accessibility and availability. City cardholders can borrow downloadable video, audiobooks, and eBooks to their MP3 and iPod players without leaving their homes. The library also presents such enduring cultural programs such as its Jazz and Blues Music Series, Battle of the Books, Spell Bowl, Creasy Book Discussions, Storytelling Presentations, all-ages summer reading programs, author lectures and signings, and numerous special events throughout the year that enrich the cultural fabric of the city. Despite temporarily reducing its hours of operation last year to conserve funds, the library continues to be the city's cultural center while forging its way into the expanding world of computer and information technology. The Southfield Parks and Recreation Department continues to present family-friendly, culturally relevant events such as the Family Fun and Safety Night, the two-day End of Summer Samor Fest, Who at the Burg, Family Movie Night, Tree Lighting, Daddy Daughter Dinner Dance, Family Pool Parties, and many more. These events have been made possible through collaborative partnerships with a wide range of community groups and organizations such as Providence Hospital, Oakland County Parks and Recreation, and a host of others. These partnerships enable the city to continue offering exciting, high-quality events for the whole family at a fraction of the cost. The recession has necessitated structural changes in the size of government. As a result, since 2004, the city has reduced staffing levels by over 210 employees, or 26% of the workforce. This has necessitated the cross-training of existing staff, employing new technology, resourcerie, and process improvements that help maintain high-quality service levels while doing more with less. This has enabled city department heads and staff members to perform a variety of additional functions while wearing numerous hats and fulfilling multiple job functions with no drop-off in service delivery to residents. This has taken extraordinary dedication on the part of city staff to make these adjustments without reducing services to the public. Southfield government is streamlined yet capable. It has made smaller government an essential element of cost reduction to meet the challenge of declining revenues from most major sources. The Southfield property owner, whose home has a market value of $100,000 and a taxable value of $50,000, will provide $1,225 in city property tax dollars in the coming fiscal year. This averages out to just a little over $3 per day. Although the city collects and processes total property tax, only about 40 cents on the dollars destined for city operations. Most of that tax dollar, approximately 60 cents, goes to other taxing authorities for educational purposes and to provide for county services. The financial forecast is both daunting and sobering on a state level. According to state indicators in Lansing, state shared revenue, the city's second-largest general fund revenue source, though showing an increase this year, is still 35% below 2001-2002 levels. Taxable values to support city services are projected to be down 8.5% for fiscal year That is in addition to an 11% dip the previous fiscal year, including allowances for commercial tax valuation appeals. This translates to roughly a cumulative decrease of 50% in property tax valuations since the 2008-2009 fiscal year. These declines in property values were unprecedented in the city's 55-year history and were simply beyond anyone's ability to predict. Despite this dramatic drop in valuations, Southfield has balanced the 2013-2014 general fund budget without the use of fund balance for operations. The general fund budget utilizes $985,712 in savings, but that is strictly a cautious reserve for commercial appeals. If the projections prove too cautious and appeals come in below the estimated forecast, this reserve can be returned to fund balance for future use and applied to capital projects such as facilities or roads. This strategy has been reviewed by Plant and Moran, the city's independent auditors, and deemed a prudent approach to Southfield's long-term sustainability. This strategic planning and allocation of the general fund budget ensures that Southfield will have a safe landing despite navigating through tough economic times. Fortunately, through careful planning, strategic vision, and strict adherence to a stabilization plan that began back in 2004, Southfield has been able to avoid drastic service cuts or financial crisis that has occurred in other cities. The city's strategy has been sound despite the length of the national recession and the severity of the fiscal challenges. Whenever the economy has looked bleak, Southfield has found a way to balance its books and offer high-quality services without layoffs or service reductions. Southfield's success has been built on integrity, concentrating on areas that can be controlled and improved, being committed to strict expenditure limits, and focusing on greater efficiency. This is called for bold vision, innovative concepts, fiscal discipline, and common-sense approaches to maintain the day-to-day services that residents expect. Moving forward, these strategies and actions must be accelerated to help offset many of the dramatic losses in property tax and state revenue that have been experienced over the past few years. City leadership recognizes that in order to remain an independent and thriving municipality with long-term sustainability, there must be a simultaneous focus on tax base enhancement and operating cost reduction. The ability to change with the times, diversify and improve, utilize skill and expertise, take advantage of grant funding, forge community partnerships, and embrace hard work will enable Southfield to be a major player in the global marketplace today, tomorrow, and beyond. It is the city's shared vision that when Southfield's story goes down in the history books, it will not be as a casualty of the recession, but rather as one of repopulation, recovery, reinvention, and reinvestment. That is a central focus of the 2013-2014 budget plan, as Southfield looks to be a leader in fueling the economic recovery of the region. That wraps up our special 2013-2014 City Budget Edition of 15 News. Thank you for watching.
Well, Mr. Charette, I don't know how you arranged that thunder at the beginning of that video, but you do miracles with our budget, so I guess I'm not surprised. A lot of work has gone into this, and, sir, do you have anything else that you'd like to add this evening before I open the public hearing?
No, other than, again, to also credit the public for their support back in May of 2011 for their dedication to the community, because we get a lot of input from the public that helps on appearance issues, code issues, many other parts of municipal operation. So it is a true team effort involving all segments of the community.
Okay. At this juncture, then, I'm going to declare the public hearing open on the 2013-2014 budget. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council on this budget? Seeing none, then I will declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move the 2013-2014 City Budget adoption in accordance with the recommendations with the city administrator.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercassi and supported by Mr. Frazier. Is there any other council discussion?
I would just like to say, if I may, what a beautiful job our Cable 15 Department did on that presentation. It just makes the city, I can't say makes the city look beautiful, but the city looks beautiful. The way that they presented it should make us all proud. I thought it was just extraordinary. The finest one, I think, we've ever done.
Ms. Seymour, going along that vein, I would add that the city continues, despite all of the challenges that we've had financially, continues to provide top-notch services, particularly in the area of public safety, library, and Parks and Rec. And again, I'd underscore that this budget reflects over a million-dollar decrease in the funds that we had available this time last year. Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something. At our study session, when we really reviewed the meat of this, I had mentioned to our city administrator, and I'm glad it was included in the video, the audit that was performed by Plant Moran. So this isn't just city officials and the city administration saying what a great job we've done. We have an independent audit from a reputable firm, Plant Moran, that says of all of the challenges that we faced during the recession, of all of the hurdles that we've had to overcome, of all the things that have been thrown at us, we're still surviving, and we're doing the best we can, given the circumstances that we're under. And it was good to hear, because when it comes from us as elected officials, we say it, but the outside validation makes the residents know, this isn't spin. This isn't fluff that we're giving to the residents. These are validated numbers, and we are doing everything we can to make sure that your taxpayer dollars are being wisely spent here in City Hall, and we're still providing those top-notch services.
And Mr. Frazier?
I'm sorry.
Yes. Just to add on to what Mr. Moss has said in the video, you're getting all of this for 40 cents a day? That's unheard of. Top-notch safety. I know our streets need some work, but we're busy trying to find a way to get that done, too. But this is a great neighborhood, or a great city, and you live in great neighborhoods. Thanks.
And Ms. Seymour?
Thank you. I just want to compliment our staff. They're having to do a lot more with, you know, fewer people, and they're dedicating They're having to do a lot more with, you know, fewer people, and their dedication and hard work is to be commended. This is a team effort, and by that I mean everybody that's involved with the city, the elected officials, the appointed officials, the staff. Staff has just been doing a tremendous job, and I don't want to overlook saying that because they don't always get the credit they deserve. And we are keeping services up, and we are keeping our city in top-notch shape. We're in older, we have older streets, so obviously those do need to get repaired, and we're working on it. We're going to see improvements in a lot of areas, but I am very proud of the city. I'm very proud of the budget, and I'm very proud of how good we look. So I think we're all proud to live in this city, and it's my home, and I'm proud to live here.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Charette, you have a budget.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we move on to our communications. The first person under communications who's been asked to be recognized this evening is Pamela Gerald. Ms. Gerald is not in the house, let the record so indicate. The second person who's asked to speak this evening is Gerard Mullen. Mr. Mullen is not in the house, let the record so indicate. We move on to the council portion of the agenda. Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I just have a quick story to tell. Right after, when I was first elected in 2011, a friend of mine's father called me and said, can you find out something for me? There are woods, there was a walkable trail just north of Shardsedick that I've been to before, and it's just phenomenal. But the bridge that leads to those woods is closed off. You can only get there from the road off a 12-mile road, and I'd really like to know how do I, how do we get back there? So I think one of the first calls I made as a councilman was maybe to Terry Crowde and asked him, you know, what's the status of that? And Terry said, the bridge has been worn and torn, and I'd never been there before. The bridge has been worn and torn, and we're doing some improvement to it, so it should be open within the year. And flash forward, or flash, yeah, flash forward at the time to about last week, council received an invitation to attend the ribbon-cutting for the Berberian Woods Nature Preserve. And I didn't really know exactly where it was, but I knew it was one of the projects that we had supported. So I tended, as I'm driving, I'm thinking, you know, this is exactly the same project that I was told about when I was first elected. And I'm driving downstream Wood Lane, and as you're driving down to the very end of the street where the actual entrance to the nature preserve is, I was passing by a neighbor that was walking toward it, passing by two neighbors that were walking toward it. And it really, once I parked at the end of the street, you could see this was a community gathering about the Berberian Nature Preserve. And you find out more about the guy who had owned the land and had owned the nature preserve, and he was a singer, and he had a music studio on his property. He held Motown Review concerts back at the height of Motown, and you could just tell the community really loved the story behind the nature preserve, behind the land that was owned. And I'm not necessarily an outdoorsy type of person. I definitely liked the city. I spent a weekend in Ross Common County up north and thought I was going to get eaten by a bear. So that gives you context about my take on nature. But this was beautiful, and the bridge has been improved. The neighbor said, you know, we like to keep this a little secret in Southfield, but the secret's out now, because this, it was beautiful as you go over the bridge into the actual nature preserve. It's breathtaking, and it's amazing to think, this is about a quarter of a mile from Tell 12. This is a quarter a mile from Telegraph Road, and it's a world away. The nature that's there, the stream, Rouge River that runs through it, is just absolutely breathtaking. So if residents have the opportunity to go down to the Berberian Nature Preserve, which is off of Streamwood Lane, off a 12-mile road near Telegraph, absolutely take up that opportunity, because it's like nothing else you'll ever see in Southfield.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Ara Berberian, whom you're speaking of, was an opera singer, and he sang with the Metropolitan Opera. I think that's pretty impressive.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. But he was a great patron of nature and a great appreciator, and I wish he could have seen the changes that have been made, but it's a great story.
I'll add one more thing to that. Mr. Berberian told me, he said, when he went and performed in New York, people used to brag about Central Park. He said, that's nothing. I have Central Park in my backyard.
Is there anyone else? If not, I have one item to remind people about. This Saturday, we're having a mid-century modern architecture tour in Southfield. This is the first time we've done something like this, and it's to highlight some of our unique structures, buildings, religious institutions, as well as three neighborhoods will be highlighted, Northland Gardens, Washington Heights, and Cranbrook. The tours last about two and a half hours, and it starts at the Millennium Center, which originally was the Northland Theater. The cost of the motor trip is $20, and there are still a few seats available on the bus. You can pay at the door of the bus. Again, that's Saturday at 1:00 PM at the Millennium Center. And this event is sponsored by the Southfield Historical Society and our planning department. We have nothing else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Before we move on, I would wish you would refer to the finance committee two things. I would like to discuss a possible road millage. We are desperately needing road repairs, both major and local roads, and I'd like to explore that and see if there's something that we could do in immediate future to propose some kind of a ballot proposal to our residents so that we might be able to get ahead of the destruction of these roads, and before they become roads that we're going to need completely new construction if they're not maintained properly. The other thing I'd like to have sent to the finance committee for immediate review is to find out where we stand on the infrastructure in John Grace area. We had that on our agenda last week, and I understand we'd like to see some changes to that, and I'd like to make sure that we get that in under this year's construction if possible, whatever it would take to move it. I'd like to explore that.
I'd be happy to refer both those to the finance committee. Mr. Fercosi, can you explain a little more infrastructure? Are you talking about the water mains?
Water mains, there was some discussion that it probably could need some additional engineering on that project to go forward, and it would save each unit additional monies that normally it would cost them because of probably lining some of the sores as opposed to just replacing them. But I'd like to discuss that entire issue so that we can move forward on that. It's got to move before this winter.
We did discuss this a little bit earlier in the broadest sense, but sure, we'll refer that to the finance committee, which you chair. The mayor's not with us this evening, so we have no report from the mayor. Next, we go to the administration.
Back again, thank you. Mr. President, I'm requesting, really reflective of the work done by our HR staff and legal, the approval of an amendment to our retirement system. The amendment would provide pension credit for time spent by a city employee while on active duty in the United States military, who makes the ultimate sacrifice in service to the country. Approval of this amendment would assist the surviving beneficiary in such a situation.
And as I understand it, this is something we have to do because we want to be in compliance with federal law, correct?
That is correct, and this is timely. It's effective, be effective at the proper time.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Fercosi. Is there any other discussion?
I have.
Yes, sir.
This would have to be someone that's actively, in active duty at the time of their demise?
Yes.
Okay. Not someone that had served, but they have to be active duty.
Right, correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Administrator, anything else this evening?
No, thank you.
The ordinance needs to be...
Oh, thank goodness.
That's right, it's an emergency ordinance. Thank you.
I always forget the ordinance part, yeah, okay.
And there was a recommendation that it be introduced and enacted tonight as an emergency ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Frazier, you usually take care of this for us. You're the keeper of numbers.
Okay, I think this must be about 11.
1611 is the next ordinance number.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we introduce and enact ordinance number 1611.
Need a support?
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Moss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go to the attorney. Ms. Ward, I know you have something for us.
I do, thank you. Last week, Lieutenant Governor signed legislation that had been approved by both the House and Senate recently, and they changed the state law regarding fireworks. And as you may recall, we introduced and enacted an ordinance approximately a year ago to be consistent with state law. At that time, the law, the state law provided that a municipality could not prohibit or regulate the discharge and use of consumer fireworks the day before, the day of, and the day after certain specified national holidays. And so this council said, you know, we understand the state law precludes us from those three-day periods, but other than that, we want to prohibit the use of those consumer fireworks within the city of Southfield. I think there was a lot of discussion over the past year and a lot of issues that arose because these fireworks then were going at all times of the night, and a lot of nuisance issues, and the state took it up again, and they said this. A government, a local government, can now regulate during that three-day period during the hours of midnight and 8:00 AM. So on the day of, the day before, and the day after those holidays, the local government could again prohibit, restrict, regulate the use of those fireworks so that during the time people are trying to sleep in general, you could regulate. The only exception of that midnight to 8:00 was New Year's Day, and the state law says that a local unit of government can regulate between the hours of 1:00 AM and 8:00 AM on New Year's Day, assuming that, you know, midnight is kind of the big hour, and there should be some time on New Year's Day. So I had prepared an ordinance and brought it this evening to see if council was interested in allowing the city ordinance to prohibit those hours. And so basically what you have before you tonight would say that, again, no consumer fireworks could be used between 12:00 and 8:00 AM on those national holidays, with the exception of New Year's Day, it would be 1:00 to 8:00 AM. Again, we know we're kind of up against July 4th here, and so we're asking you do it as a, if you're so inclined, do it as an emergency ordinance. We would publish it. We'll probably still miss July 4th, but we can get, you know, part of that weekend, and obviously going forward, we'll have this in effect.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move the recommendation of our city attorney regards to fireworks, reducing the hours from 12:00 to 8:00, and those other hours which he has mentioned in regards to the prohibition of fireworks.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercosi and supported by Ms. Seymour. Before we take a vote, is there any question or comment?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Frazier.
What would be the penalty in the event that someone did discharge the fireworks during these prohibited hours?
Yeah, through the chair, it's a civil infraction under our code, and we would assess, the court could assess a fine, a civil fine of up to $500.
So they have to be caught in the act of doing this?
Right. I mean, if we had a phone call or an officer heard it and went there, right, then there would be a ticket issued for a civil infraction.
Okay, thank you.
If you can't sleep and you call the police, that's a thing to do.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, just a remark that, you know, I always wish we could add an amendment onto this, that anything that affects us in local neighborhoods, Lansing has to come here first before they want to pass something like this. I can only imagine some state representatives and state senators passed this, and Lansing went home at night, heard a lot of fireworks, and said, we made a huge mistake here. So this is a good fix for our community.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to ask community relations that they notify the channels 4, 2, and 7, our local channels, that we have put this in place as emergency ordinance, so that even though the newspapers will not be able to get that word out, but I'm sure that the stations here will be more than glad to help us out. Secondly, I've seen tents already coming up in the parking lots, are those for sales of fireworks?
Yes, they are.
Keith, is that being regulated, or how do we stand as far as the power in which one explodes?
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Mr. President, Mr. Fercosi, yes, those are regulated. They are inspected, they have to apply for a permit, temporary occupancy permit, and then they're inspected by the Fire Prevention Division. There's approximately five in the city right now. I think they did three inspections this morning, or today.
And when will they have to stop selling, I should say?
I really am not...
Within the permit?
The length of time that they have, that they're able to sell. I assume after the holiday, they have to close operations.
I'd like to see them disappear immediately after the holiday.
I can get that information for you. I'll have to talk to the building department, see how long they issue the permit for.
Ms. Ward has something to add.
Yeah, with respect to the law that passed last year, a lot of that ability to regulate was removed from the local units. It was by the state. So those, the sale of those fireworks now goes through the state, and they issue that permit. We still maintain the right to issue the permit for the tent that they set up and make sure that that goes into our temporary sales, outside sales. But again, a lot of this has been removed from the city, much of it has. So they have a right to be there, and the chief's right in terms of the length that that tent could stay there. That would be regulated by the permit that we issue for the temporary sales.
I seen on television the other day where because of the use of them, or possible use of them, that sparklers are going to be prohibited, and that they, are you being used for whatever, setting off bombs or whatever that is. So I don't know if that's a federal law now, or how that's being said, but I'd like you to check into that, because sparklers have been for a thousand years, you know, the fun and games for their little kids.
Yeah, sparklers are very dangerous.
It's too bad that we are depriving kids of their sparklers and things like that, but I guess times change.
And I'll research that for you. Fire prevention looks at things like access into these tents, do they have the proper fire extinguishers, making sure there's no smoking permitted within the area. They look at if they're using a generator, that it has to be set, there's a certain setback, so they make sure that it's a safe environment for anybody that's going to purchase these products.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes, question, does this, will this ordinance cover all fireworks? Because it seems to me when we got into this discussion a year ago, it was only those fireworks that left the ground?
This includes consumer fireworks, and there are definitions of that, and generally it does include the ones that go from the ground. I don't believe sparklers are prohibited by state law.
No, I think you're right, sparklers and the snakes or worms.
Right, right. These are the ones that actually, and there's a definition for our consumer fireworks and what the trajectory in, that goes up, and right.
But this covers anything that makes noise?
The state law, is that what you're saying?
One that were...
This covers consumer fireworks, which is what the state allows us to regulate on certain days in certain hours.
Yes.
That's what this covers.
Whether it makes noise or leaves the ground.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, incidentally, I think somebody's going to be in trouble, because I was, they got a tent set up over at Harvard Row in a parking lot, and I was over there today... got a tent set up over at Harvard Row in a parking lot, and I was over there today, not at the tent, but I was driving by, and somebody is going to be in trouble because I saw a guy wheeling a two-wheeler loaded with boxes all the way to the top headed for a truck. So whatever they're selling over there, he had a whole two-wheel cart full of them.
Was that Mr. Sharet?
I doubt it. I had one other comment, I think you're, to pick up on your suggestion about doing a press release on this change. Last week, the Ferndale City Council enacted a similar ban, overnight ban on fireworks, and it did make the WDET and several other stations. So hopefully, we can get the...
We will aggressively pursue getting the information out.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor, and if there's no other discussion, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
We need an emergency...
We're going to do an ordinance next.
Go ahead.
But all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we consider this ordinance an emergency ordinance and introduce and enact it as such this evening.
All right.
Support.
It's been...
1612.
It's ordinance 1612.
Yes.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Moss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have nothing from the clerk, I don't believe, treasurer, how about the planner? Anything this evening? Okay. We do come to schedule, and I would like to suggest that we, our next meeting is July 15th. In the last few days, in conference with our city administrator, the agenda for the 15th has mushroomed. We have quite a few things on it, and that is the night that we were going to have a dialogue with the leadership of L T U. And I would like to suggest that we start that meeting at 5:00 with L T U and then have the study session continue after that.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, I would.
I'll move that the committee of the whole meeting for July 15th, 2013 begin at an amended time at 5:00 PM.
All right. Support. It's been moved by Mr. Moss, supported by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think we should have a meeting sometime before 15 days. It's just my, I mean, there's a lot of things to discuss, even though they're not on that agenda. If the agenda's heavy, I mean, there's a lot of things that we, you know, may not take a big evening, but now we're just mentioning, you know, the road millage. I mean, we as a group have to start dealing with this.
We're going to start with that in the Finance Committee. I did talk to Ms., you know, you, just, you know, I did talk to Mr. Sharet about this after you suggested it earlier, and Mr. Sharet says we're in a data gathering mode on this. Before we get into a lengthy discussion, we do need more data on, we do have the data on the condition of roads. We don't have the data on the cost. So I know he's asked for more time on that, correct?
It is, we began initial discussions in the Finance Committee. We need to do some more work.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I know there's more work to be done, but, you know, I mean, I look at our roads and even though I think our roads are better than most communities, I'd hate to see ours be denied maintenance where it becomes a major workout to get these roads done. And why I mention it's important is because from the time we decide to go for millage or find the money or whatever we tend to do, we're into another season. And I mean, that's how I look at the roads or any of those things that take time to engineer, get ready, go out to bids, and then you have to have a construction season to get it done. And so even if you did something this year, you're talking about, some of them would even be touched for two years. And I just think that it's a very important thing. I think people, you know, I drove down Potomac, I saw Mr. Hobowski the other day, and almost lost my wheel. There's a big hole right in the middle, right down the middle side in the street. And this is happening throughout our city, and some of the concrete is crumbling because, you know, of age. And I just think that, you know, when you look at reconstruction, you're talking about a lot of cost. And a lot of these things, we can buy time by giving heavy maintenance to our roads and maybe putting off this major construction and cost. So I just, I know Mr. Hobowski's here, I have not discussed it with him, but I'd like him to come and tell us what he would like to do to bring us up to speed so that we might be able to make a, I guess, some kind, take some kind of action to address these roads. And I'm tired of seeing these thump, 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 thumps wherever you go, you know.
Well, we know we've got a problem. But we have a motion on the floor to start this meeting of July 15th, move the time from 7:00 PM to 5:00 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Is there any other items to come before the body?
I would like to ask, or say this. Now, I know that Public Works goes through the city and puts the roads in order of need. I think that would be helpful to have that, so we take a look at it to find out, rather than to just say, "Well, Greenfield is bad, let's fix that one." Let's make sure that we put the money where the worst ones are, or the ones with, that have the greatest impact on the city.
Well, there are reports showing the grade, you know, as to priority need out there, and I take the priorities and try to estimate costs, and then you know how much money you need. And I just drove down Edward Street yesterday, and I was tickled to see that they have torn up the road and are fixing that up and repairing that neighborhood. I know they waited until the school let out to do that work, but they're in their working heart, and I think we have to just keep on these roads and not get them to the point where we have to have major construction.
Ms. Seymour.
Well, we need to distinguish between the roads that we have control over and those that are county and those that are state roads. So I know a lot of people expect, don't understand that we don't have jurisdiction over all roads, and they want us to repair them, and we don't have any authority to do that.
Correct.
So if we're going to have some sort of a statement as to which roads are bad, we need to know which ones are our roads that we have some jurisdiction over. And other roads, it's fine to mention all of them, but to categorize them so people don't think that we have authority over all these roads because we don't. And yet, we do need to, you know, ask for, pursue other funding for the state roads with the appropriate county and state jurisdictions.
Mr. Chairman, I think Ms. Seymour is bringing forth a very important thing. I think what we should do sometime is maybe get the press to do a, to print a map which indicates by color or by some designated way what city roads are, our city major roads and state roads and county roads, so that when they drive on some of the county roads and state roads, they're not, it doesn't reflect directly at this body not doing the job. Because a lot of people are confused, you know, when you tell them about, you talk about 10 Mile Road, for example, 10 Mile in Southfield, neither one of those roads are ours.
Right.
You know, and I think that it just helps because when you tell people, you know, all the odd ones are ours going east-west, and then the few of them that go north-south are just Beach, Inkster, and Evergreen, you know, they're amazed. They say, "What happened to Greenfield, Lasher, Telegraph, you know, Northwestern? Those aren't blowing us."
We also have the problem with neighborhood streets.
Right.
Where a lot of money was spent in better times, doing blacktop or cement work in neighborhoods. And that kind of major investment hasn't happened in many years in our neighborhoods. Ms. Seymour, you had another comment?
Yes, I would also like to add to what Mr. Fercassi said and to what I said earlier. I think not only with the newspaper, but I think we should be putting this on cable because people, people ask me all the time, they complain about a road that we have no authority over, and it's difficult to explain to them, but if we could do something graphically on cable so that people who are watching and, you know, looking for things, however, I'm not sure what their program list looks like, but so that people could go there if they wanted to. If not cable, then certainly on our website that we could identify which are city roads and which are under other jurisdictions. I think on the website would be a good place, too.
Okay.
Because it's a constant, I mean, it comes up constantly.
Well, I know Ms. Hawkins is listening, so...
And Mr. Sharet was taking notes.
All noted.
Mr. Chief, Fire Chief, one more time.
I, through the chair, I have an update. I talked to the fire marshal, and we allow the tents to stay in operation for two to three days after the holiday, and they're a temporary business permit issued through the clerk's office is how they come in. And I'll get an answer on the break person.
Thank you very much for that. That was quick.
Pretty fast.
They do good work.
All right. We have no other business. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.